Okay, we will call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education for our update on special education. This has been something that we have been trying to get to for a while. At the request of the Board, we've asked Ms. Joanne Pulley to give us an update on the status of our special education programs. So, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have, our interpreter today is Ms. Mina Thorleksen. Ms. Thorleksen, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself? I'm sorry, at the microphone. Thank you. Gracias. We also have assistance, hearings, headsets available for those who need assistance with hearing. Thank you. Is, we do not have a superintendent's report for this meeting. Is there any correspondence from the, that Board members need to bring forward, would like to bring forward?
We have public comments.
Okay, that's next. Okay, okay, so now we get to public comments. And I believe we have a couple of-
Just one?
Just one? Oh, one?
The rest are for the agenda items, so.
Okay.
Kate Smith.
Okay, mind your public speakers have three minutes. I will give you 30 second notice when you're, when you're almost done. Thank you.
My name is Kate Smith and I'm an education reform activist. I'd like to publicly commend Joanne Pulley for the job that she's doing with regard to the families that were victimized by the past regime. As far as I know, this woman was mandated by Marshall McClish to settle all of the due process cases that were coming down the pike. I do think she has a way to reduce the number of due process, and she'll speak about that later. Please be aware that I'm determined to have SELPA pay for my son's due process. As you know, my son was denied services and I filed for due process and I was reimbursed the tuition for School Down Under and Landmark. That was $55,000 and, you know, in addition to several assessments. Marshall McClish set it up so that, first of all, SELPA wouldn't pay for anything unless she was involved with the due process. Second, Marshall McClish set it up so that if a due process started out as an IDEA complaint but ended up a 504 complaint, then the school district would pay. Now, I happen to know that every September, the Joint Powers Agency, of which, you know, Brian Sarvis is a part of, every September, they approve hundreds of thousands of dollars in non-public school placements and then that money is reimbursed by the state. It's a scam. My daughter was put down for $155,000 in Casa Pacifica, a private school, and she never went anywhere but Santa Barbara School District. So, I am hoping that because my son was assessed by Nancy Kurtser and in it, it said he had a learning processing disorder, that you would then go back to SELPA and say, wait a minute, this was reimbursement for Landmark and for School Down Under and for assessments, therefore, SELPA should pay. If Dr. Sarvis has any questions, please contact me. I put my telephone number down on the public comment sheet. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, I believe that completes public comment. We will move on then to the item on our agenda, the report. Okay, I think you will be speaking to the agenda item? Okay, so, we are now moving to the agenda item. Item B1, Report on the State of Special Education. Ms. Joanne Pulley will be making our, the report.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Sarvis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the state of special education in Santa Barbara school districts. Thank you for the community and their participation in this workshop this afternoon, too. I'd like to start off with sharing a few facts in terms of what our current state is in special education. Then I'd like to move on to the Tucker Report, which was presented to this Board in, I believe, 2003, and then talk with you a little bit about the future of special education in Santa Barbara school districts. A few fast facts about special education. We have at the elementary level 654 students currently receiving special education services in a classroom or in, with classroom support. At the secondary level, we have 1,312 who are receiving those same services in a classroom or with, with resource specialist support outside the classroom. That would refer to our total number of students who are either designated as RSP, Resource Specialist Program, or SDC, Special Day Class. We have direct service, those two classes that I named, Special Day Class and Resource Specialist, that is, direct educational service. Then we have designated instructional services, which are speech and language services, adaptive physical education, deaf and hard of hearing itinerant services, visual impairment in program, program services. We also have psychologists who provide counseling services as a designated instructional service. I don't think I left anyone out, my apologies to my staff. We also have nurses who are really covering general education and special education. They provide quite a bit of support for us with our special education students who have significant medical issues. It won't move, Dave. And, you know, he didn't tell me what to do if this happens.
The right hand.
It won't move, Dave.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
A highly technological approach.
It is, it's like whacking it on the side of the box if it doesn't work. I'd like to show you some numbers for, can everyone in the audience see through my, my profile here? I'd like to show you some numbers. Twice a year, special education throughout the state produces pupil counts. We do a pupil count in December, so you'll see the green numbers on both of these bars, the lower one, elementary, the next one, secondary, with counts on where we were in terms of enrollment in special education in December of 2005. At the elementary level, we had 594 students. At the secondary level, we had 1,025 students. In June, when we did our end of year pupil count, that'll be the blue bar in the middle, the aqua bar in the middle. At the elementary level, we had grown from 594 to 805 between December and June. Secondary had grown from 1,025 to 1,509 from December to June. Those are our two pupil counts that were required to produce. The third bar you'll see is the purple bar representing our enrollment this year. And again, those are the numbers that I quoted to you earlier, 654 students at the elementary level and 1,312 students at the secondary level. As you can see, this year, we're already starting off at a higher rate than we did last year. So, we may see the numbers climb significantly higher if we continue current practice with our December count and our June count.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? Do you know how many of those are transfers from feeder districts?
I would hesitate to quote you that number in this forum, but I'd be happy to get that information to you. We do have a significant number of students coming in to our secondary district from our feeder elementary districts, but I, I would be reluctant to give you that number today. I can get that for you.
I'm just interested in the elementary figure for that enrollment. Thank you.
Okay.
And what accounts for this big difference within a single year? Or do I misunderstand this?
No, you're, you're not misunderstanding, Dr. Noel.
500, 500 student difference.
It's a significant difference.
Is this an anomaly of data collection, or is this-
Well-
All of a sudden, there are 500 more genuine, authentic, valid special ed cases from, in the middle of the year?
One of the, well, we have newly identified students. That would account for some of those numbers, obviously. At the secondary level, we do have the students coming in, for example, our new enrollments for our, from our feeder districts that we bring into 7th grade are adding more numbers to our secondary counts. We also have an issue with over identification in Santa Barbara school districts.
Over identification?
Yes.
And that would be more accurately shown at the elementary level, where there's, where there's not the influx of feeders-
That would-
Between December and June.
Yes, and we do have, we do have, and I, again, I wouldn't quote this number without doing a little more research, we also have at the secondary level, students who are newly identified as 7th, 8th, 9th grade, 10th grade students that are also first, first time identification for special education. Not a lot, because most of the students do tend to be identified in elementary and move forward and into the system, but occasionally, we do have some older students that are newly identified.
You're probably going to get to this, but do we have data on how many leave the program after, ever, after having been successful for them?
Well, unfortunately, I don't have that data for you. One of the challenges we've had in, in our department is consistent data input, and that position was filled this year with a permanent 12-month employee. In the past, we've had a series of temporary employees who were only employed for 10 months and some very inconsistent practices with the input of data. We're still going through the process of cleaning up some of the errors that were made in inputting that data. I'm, I'm very confident in my September '06 numbers, and I'm confident in my June '06 numbers. There's still some, some vestiges of, of past poor practices that may be reflected in the December '05 numbers, but I can, I can assure you with about 90% confidence that the second two numbers that you see are relatively accurate.
One more quick question about, when you're talking about over identification-
Yes.
So, the percentage of students has gone, that are enrolled in special education are, is higher now than it was, say, three or four years ago. Where are we in relation to the state average percentage?
We're, we're over.
What is it now?
State and national is about 10%, and I would guess we're about at 12%.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not, I don't understand a lot of things, but do, a lot of the students who are in special ed are there for something like speech services or, I mean, something very specific that lasts for a very short time or for a year or so, and then they're out of the program? Is that correct?
Well, right now, and this is another piece of the, this process that we're trying to work through to sort out the data, of these students that you see here, some of these students are only receiving education services. That would be the Resource Specialist Program or a day class. Some of these children are also receiving speech and language services. Those would be the designated instructional services that I mentioned earlier. For example, one of, one of these students could receive Resource Specialist Services and services from an itinerant deaf and hard of hearing teacher and speech and language services. So, to be careful about duplicate counts, the only information I'm presenting to you on numbers is going to be students who are in a special day class or receiving Resource Specialist Services. Students who currently receive speech and language services are about 605 students, but again, those are duplicates, some of those are duplicates that are in this number here. We have about 90 students receiving adaptive PE services, but again, some of those are reflected here. Some are standalone. Same thing for deaf and hard of hearing itinerant services and for the visually impaired program services. Now, I'm confused. So, if a student just gets speech and, speech therapy- That number won't be reflected in these. They won't be in this group. So, that's not accounting for this up and down? No, but I can tell you that there are 605 students currently receiving speech and language by the speech, from the speech and language specialist, but to pull that num, to pull those numbers out would be a little more, require a little more time. I'm happy to do that if you'd like to see that disaggregated data.
I'm just curious then, how many, if this is the students that are in these kind of programs, but how many students get any, I mean, what percentage get any kind of service? Then it must be quite high.
It's quite high.
I mean, like-
If we were, if we were adding in, let's say on, just as an estimate, let's say maybe, and this is a very conservative estimate, let's say only 50% of our speech and language students are standalone services. You could add in another 300 to those numbers between elementary and secondary. Of our 90 students with adaptive PE, let's say 50% of them are, are receiving APE as a standalone service, add another 40, 45 in. Our students who are in the visual impairment program, I don't have those counts, they're just, they're just doing their numbers, and same thing for deaf and hard of hearing itinerant services. So, it, it would add quite a few to our counts.
Could you give me an idea of, of the breakdown of the speech and language people between native English speakers and English language learners?
That are currently receiving services in an IEP?
Of the 605 that you're talking about.
I'm sorry, Dr. Noel, I don't have that number for you. I'd be happy to get that. You'd like a breakdown on ELL students?
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm curious and trying to sort out in my own mind is, to what extent are we talk, to what extent are people who are, are struggling with English, learning English, being misidentified, if at all, as special ed kids in the language, speech and language program? Is that a, is that a meaningful question?
Indeed, it is, and, and I would say that we might be surprised at the number that are, that are ELL students receiving speech and language services. And I do believe that we do have some element of over identification where those students and their acquisition of, of the English language are perhaps being wrongly identified as students who are disabled with, or have the speech and language disability. It's a concern.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't want to beat the numbers to death, but I'm, I'm concerned just about the overall numbers, because our enrollment is declining and yet special ed numbers are, are going up.
Yes.
So, I think the increase is maybe even a little more numerically significant, because there are fewer numbers of students. We actually had a breakdown by school in December of '05 that Dr. Hayden did, and I think that that would be extremely helpful. You know, not in the short term, sometime in the future, I think it would be really helpful to see those numbers. But one of the numbers I'm particularly interested in is students who are not identified in a feeder elementary school district who then are identified in 7th and 8th grade.
Yes.
Because I'm really interested in that articulation problem. You know, our, I mean, I hear anecdotally that it's very difficult in some districts to obtain services, and then when they come to the Santa Barbara secondary district, that if parents are persistent, they do obtain services. So, I'd really like to see who is newly identified in 7th and 8th grade, who has come to us from a feeder district, who has requested services or tried to investigate services in that feeder district.
Okay, I'd be happy to get that count for you. We could, we could, we have our transition IEP meetings from our feeder districts into the secondary schools from March through June, and we did see, I wouldn't say it was a, a huge number, but we did, we did see a significant number of first time initial IEPs for students who were in the second semester of 6th grade.
Okay, okay. I mean, I cast no aspersions on the feeder districts, it's just that I want to be able to attach numbers to stories that I've heard.
And that's, that's one of the issues I'll come to later on, one of the challenges of governance of this Board with the, what we receive in terms of, of students coming in from feeder districts, but we have no, no authority, no influence in how those programs are run in those feeder districts. I believe that was a challenge that was also pointed out in the Tucker Report.
And is there communication between you and your counterparts in the, in those districts? Well, I mean, really, Galita probably is the only district that has-
Galita sends the largest number, just, just because they are bigger. Hope District, we have monthly meetings, so I-
Okay.
I do regularly meet with the administrators from Hope and Galita. I don't have a lot of contact with Cold Spring and-
And Montecito Union.
Montecito Union.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, just, just as a, as a thought, our current enrollment, right now, at the elementary level, I think is about, total students, I think it's about 5,700, and at the elementary level, it's about 10,100 plus or minus. If you just did sheer percentages of 10%, we should have about 577 students at the elementary level, and we currently have 654. And at the secondary level, we should have about 1,014 students, and we have 1,312. So, as, as you can see, we're above what we should be on percentages, given national Some fast facts about staffing, we have 94 special education teachers in classrooms. Those are the teachers who would be designated as special day class teachers or resource specialist teachers. And again, that's just focusing the data, as I mentioned in that, in the last graph, on students who are receiving those education services. We have 30 staff members who are DIS staff members, that means designated instructional services. That would be speech and language specialists, adaptive PE specialists, those DIS providers that I mentioned earlier, teachers of the visual impairment program, teachers in the deaf and hard of hearing program, and psychologists. Last year, at the end of the year, June of 2006, we had 181 instructional assistants. I can't tell you our count right now, because we're still hiring, we still have some vacancies that have to be filled, but to give you just a, a glimpse of the impact that that support has on, on the budget, for example, at one particular school, San Marcos High School, we have approximately $700,000 that we are spending in instructional assistance support. Now, that's, that's because there are specific circumstances at that school that would require additional instructional assistance support, but all of that instructional assistance support is driven by IEPs. So, these are not just extra staff members floating around. In that count, instructional assistants, that's in the classified employee ranks, not counted in there, are also four interpreters, who are sign language interpreters for our students who are hearing impaired, and two transcribers who transcribe text for hearing impaired students. Both of those are at the high school. Support staff, we have 3.6 program specialists. Each of the high schools has a program specialist, DP San Marcos and Santa Barbara High, and we have a 60% program specialist who is district wide, who covers the rest of the district. Santa Barbara Junior High used its own funds and purchased program specialist time for their special education department this year, so we, we don't count that position, because it's not being funded out of our monies. Administrative support, we have one director and two coordinators.
May I ask a support type question?
Yes.
Do we have or provide things like Kurtz file machines and special technology to help people with limited vision, for example, or book readers?
We do have, we work very closely with Reading for the Blind and Dyslexic, for our students who need access to text, so our visually impaired students have access to those, those materials and that equipment.
Our library doesn't, our libraries don't have those?
Our school libraries?
Yeah.
No, those are usually dealt with, some of them do, but those are largely dealt with, with the support from the teachers in our visual impairment program. They make those arrangements for students, because their texts change every year. They also have access from the state for Braille texts. For example, a couple of years ago, we had a visually impaired student who was at, I think, fourth, third or fourth level in French, and a Braille'd French text at that level is not easily come by, so we, we access resources from, from the state to get some of the materials that we need. For some of our students, we also have access, for example, for our deaf and hard of hearing children, we may need access to an FM system that puts a mic on the teacher and has the student, in, in some cases, that individual student, in other cases, everyone in the room, has access to an enriched sound field, so that that child's able to get the instruction that's being delivered by the teacher. And what we're finding in a couple of cases, that everybody else in the room benefits from it as well, it helps the kids focus. So, we do have access through regional budgets, through the SELPA, for some of the, it's called low incidence funding, that we need to access for special equipment for children who are hearing impaired, visually impaired, or severely orthopedically impaired. You're welcome.
Can I ask a question about the staff? Are some of these people part-time, or they all are full-time?
Some of them are part-time. We have 60% and 80% staff positions. We have some psychologists who are 80%, one psychologist who is 20%, so that, that makes one FTE. So, the counts that I gave you are total FTEs. Okay. I'm sorry those numbers aren't, aren't in there, they look so awful, I left them off. I'll just tell them with you, tell them to you, and hopefully, they'll be a, a bad memory. At, at the state level, we receive approximately $11.55 million in revenues. At the federal level, we receive approximately $2.88 million in revenues. In, in Mr. Wolf's terms, the balance is made up in contributions from the district. We're known as the great encroachers as, as special ed, which just puts a picture of something black and hairy and fungus-like crawling all over the, the budget, so I just prefer to, I would prefer to refer to it as unfunded mandates. And the unfunded mandates that are met by the district's contributions to these expenses are about, what, I think, 6.16 million, Dr. Sarvis, does that sound about right? Yeah? So, it's a total of about, a little bit more than $20 million a year to support special education.
You said the unfunded mandates for our two districts are 6.16?
6.16 million. Yes.
What, next year?
The total, about 20 million.
12 million.
Mm-hmm. That includes transportation, by the way.
You'll see this next Tuesday night, a proposal to do a major study of, of special ed encroachment and funding.
I actually have the figures from '03, '04 in front of me, and it was about $4 million in '03, '04. I mean, it's a huge jump.
The encroachment?
Yeah. The contribution, I mean, there are nicer ways to say it, but yeah, it's, it's a big jump.
It is.
Given the fact that they're like one, seven, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23,
And our enrollment declined, too.
And declining enrollment, yes. Yes. That's double in three academic years.
Can I ask a question about you? I don't know if you were finished, you, you started to talk about administrative support, one director, two coordinators- You, you started to talk about administrative support, one director, two coordinators, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's no additional? That would be district office personnel that provide support to staff, I mean, to sites?
Yes, yes. I don't think I left anybody out.
And that's up from several years ago. There was a point in time when we only had one.
One director. We have a historian in our department, Lupe Santana, who's a secretary, who has, um, uh, kept quite a history of the comings and goings of directors, coordinators, directors and coordinators, directors slash coordinators, assistant superintendents, and, uh, the, the swinging door, the, the motel six that, uh, has become my office upstairs. And one of the, uh, points that she made to me after I made it through the first year was that, uh, there've been about eight people in, in my, in my position in the last eight or nine years. So some of them came a couple of times (laugh), and others only stayed for a while. So, um, the, uh, the, the staffing at, at the level of administrative support in special education has been consistent this past year, and we're very pleased that, uh, we have the two coordinators who do yeoman's work in supporting the staff and meeting with parents, being available for IEPs, doing the professional development that we need to maintain with our staff. And, uh, we're hopeful that we can, we can maintain that dynamic. It takes, takes quite a bit to, um, to run two districts in terms of special education. The Tucker Report. In 2003, um, Dr., I want to say John?
James.
James. Dr. James Tucker, uh, came to Santa Barbara School District, conducted a study, I believe it was at the request of the board, uh, to review and, uh, provide some information on, uh, the special education program and, and what he believed, what his recommendations were about what needs to happen with special education in Santa Barbara school districts. One of the first elements that, uh, that he, uh, presented was maintenance of effort and what that means. In, um, in the IDEA 04, uh, the, well, the federal law itself is, is, is pretty clear that, uh, the IDEA Part B funds are to be used to supplement and not supplant local, state, and federal monies that are to be used for special education. This, um, this, I think, is part of what explains some of the, the, uh, contributions that need to be made to support special education, because once those monies are there and allocated to that funding, any additional growth and all the shortfalls have to be picked up by the district. And that's the same situation everyone throughout the country is in. The second piece that he presented was regarding the complex structure, structure of governance with this board, and I alluded to that earlier. Uh, a couple of challenges that he noted were the fact that as one unit, you're governing an elementary and a secondary district. That in itself poses some, some significant challenges for a governing body. The four feeder elementary districts over which you have no influence are impacting, uh, our secondary district as those students move into our schools. The Santa Barbara County Education Office, which also serves some of our elementary and secondary children, students in their catchment area, is another element with a different level of governance and a different source of governance. And then, of course, the SALPA, because, uh, we're, we're impacted or affected by those issues that are related to SALPA governance, because we operate some of the regional programs for the SALPA, the, uh, visual impairment program, the deaf and hard of hearing program. So we, we have another, another element, another layer, another, uh, aspect to consider in how those agencies impact us as a district. The, um, procedural culture of special education that, uh, Dr. Tucker referenced referred to a culture of disability in the Santa Barbara school districts. Being new to the district and, and looking at that report, I, um, I was somewhat concerned when I, when I saw the, the topic, but in reading further, I think it, it really is a manifestation of what happens in a lot of districts, and that's not unique to the Santa Barbara school districts. Typically, um, because it's been a 30-year practice since IDEA, well, since, uh, PL-94142 was passed in, in 1975, when we see students who are performing poorly, we figure they have a disability and they go into special education. And, uh, that's a 30-year pattern that's going to take some, some, uh, I think, some significant challenges to remediate. And, uh, I believe that, uh, Dr. Tucker was accurate in, in pointing that out as, as a significant issue in this district, as, as in most districts. The, um, pattern has been for 30 years with the discrepancy model that we've used. Uh, if students are having difficulties, we, uh, move them, we do the best we can, obviously, in the general education environment, to help bring them along, but as they start to fall farther and farther behind, those students could have a more significant discrepancy with each year that passes, and by the time they get to about one and a half standard deviations below or difference between their ability and their achievement, we move them into special education. So the pattern has been, student fails, student fails, student fails, well, now he's failed enough to qualify for these services. And that's going to be, we hope, significantly remedied by response to intervention. And I'll, I'll cover that a little bit later in our presentation this afternoon as well. You've had an opportunity to have our psychologist, Becky Norton, from McKinley School, present to you response to intervention, uh, back in the spring. And, uh, we're expanding that program, and we're really excited about what we're going to see in terms of early identification and early intervention with children. But again, to get back to Dr. Tucker, that was, that was, um, in 2003, I think, uh, very important information for this school district to have, and I think it has led a lot of the thinking from, uh, the district level about where we want to go with our special education program and how we want to provide, uh, accesses for opportunity for our students and to increase student achievement. Any questions about those three pieces from the Tucker Report?
I think it would be useful if you'd say just a few more words about, uh, the discrepancy model. I, I'm not sure the public, presuming there's public watching, that the public fully would understand that, that's, that's a bit kind of inside the educationist, uh, club.
Well, thank you for that reminder, Dr. Noel. I, uh, I have to apologize. After 26 years of ed speak, I, I think everybody knows what I'm talking about, and I, I make a, an assumption that I shouldn't. So I think part of it just become, just is shorthand. It's, it's a, it's a lazy way of communicating the information.
Every, every field does it.
Discrepancy model. In, um, in identifying a student with a, a learning disability, uh, what we've done for the last 30 years is, um, conduct assessments that determine a difference between the student's ability level and the student's academic performance. And the rule has been, we have to have a discrepancy of one and a half standard deviations. Now, that's just, those are, those are, those are terms of measurement that are used to indicate, for example, a student may need to be, uh, let's say he's at second grade level, third, let's say third grade level, but he's performing at about, uh, mid-first grade level. We would see a significant discrepancy in that student's abilities. That's, that's what we're talking about when we refer to the discrepancy model.
So the first measurement is the ability measurement. How is that measured?
The, the testing that's conducted by the school psychologist is usually a psychoeducational evaluation, and she or he will make the, uh-
Like an IQ test?
Well, we, some, we don't, in some, we don't use IQ testing per se. We use, um, we like to use curriculum-based measurements. That would be our goal. But typically, in, in terms of a student's ability, we look at their verbal abilities, their, uh, nonverbal abilities. We look at, uh, the cognitive function. I don't like to use the word IQ. Uh, there are some sensitivities in, in, in terms of what that means and, and how it's used.
And cultural issues.
And cultural issues as well.
Can I ask, and a question I should have asked earlier, but previously, we've gotten breakdowns of how many students are in, um, you know, breakdown between SDC and RSP. Do you, percentage-wise, have that figure? It seemed like it used to be maybe 15% SDC and the rest in, in, um, RSP. Is that?
There are, there are more students in, in resource specialist programs than in, uh, SDC programs, but, um, I couldn't tell you that, that percentage today. I can get that for you.
I'm just curious if that number has changed, if that percentage has changed at all.
Well, we would see that reflection in having to create more SDC classes, for example, if we had a, a higher level of, uh, enrollment. And, uh, we did actually create one new class this year. It's a severely handicapped class at the elementary level, but those students were pretty new to our district, they're kindergarten and first grade students. And right now, there's such a small number in there that I wouldn't see that as being statistically significant. So I would suspect that, uh, the, maybe, maybe 80% 20% resource specialist, 80% and, and special day classes about 20%. The, uh, Tucker Report, in summary, made some recommendations to the Santa Barbara school districts. These are the three key recommendations that I gleaned from that report. The first being an, an adoption and implementation of research-based instructional models and strategies. That's become, uh, more, well, it's been, it's been clarified with, um, IDEA 04, and it's actually specified in IDEA 04 that we need to focus on research-based programs, research-based strategies, research-based interventions. And, uh, one of the challenges that we have in, uh, working with, uh, staff is reminding them that while this may be a program that they really enjoy, and they've used it for 15 years, and it works really, really well, it may just not be appropriate for our particular, uh, population of students. Uh, it may not be appropriate for the specific disability that, uh, they're, uh, working on correcting or remediating. So, uh, letting go of some of the things that have been, uh, honored by time by staff is, is a challenge, and that'll be something that we'll have to work on diligently in the years to come.
I have a question about this, and, and this comes up in a number of contexts. Uh, I have images of some very busy teachers. I also have images of my own experience since the 50s, reading research. It's really hard to keep on top of your field, and that's when you're full-time-
Yes.
-doing it. Uh, how do we bridge this gulf between, I mean, it's easy to say, and I know, No Tell Left Behind says it all, it's the mantra now, research-based this, research-based that. Then you turn right around and you read a proposal, or you read another document, and they echo it right back. This is all research-based. And then you, you look for the footnote that cites the research, forget it. Uh, how, how do you get content into these things that, that, so there's not just rhetoric? How, how do the teachers know what the best research is? Uh, I, I only, in, in searching about a year ago on some of this stuff, I found one site, uh, at the U.S. Department of Education that literally listed the research with respect to a particular field. And they said, you know, be patient with us, we're working on this.
Yes, yes.
What, do we, we help our teachers at this level?
Yes, we do.
How?
To, to reference a, a website, I don't have it off the top of my head, but, uh, in Florida, uh, the state has created a, a very comprehensive website on research-based programs and strategies. But, uh, to go to the U.S. Department of Education, there's a clearinghouse, it's called What Works Clearinghouse. And, uh, they are getting independent, uh, evaluations of programs and, uh, strategies. And they're moving through a, a list. They've done middle school math. We, those of us who are out in the field as practitioners would have thought they'd start with reading, since that was probably what we consider to be the most important skill, but they didn't start with reading, they started with math. So they're working through the disciplines. How does this information get to the teachers? We bring it to them. We have monthly staff meetings, and I'll make a reference to professional development now, but I do cover it later in the, in the, in our presentation. The, um, monthly meetings cover current research, current information. We have, uh, professional development opportunities for our staff to go to trainings, to go to workshops. Last year, um, the three administrators, the two coordinators and I, attended, uh, a three-day workshop in special education and student services, and brought back tons of information for our staff that we shared through the balance of the year, and we continue to share this year. We have, um, opportunities to interface with other districts in the SALPA to share resources and attend workshops and trainings. The county office has been helpful in providing those opportunities to us as well. So to stay current, um, you really need to be out there at the universities and getting those, getting those experts, uh, to come to us. We go to them, they come to us. We have, um, we have opportunities that, uh, I don't think we've fully exhausted in, in those partnerships. But, um, the, the key, I think, is just getting the current information to the teachers, and that's done through monthly meetings and trainings.
I had a question about this one, and I apologize. As you know, I have, my mouth is numb because I came from the dentist. But, uh, in, in the research-based instruction models and strategies, is there any form or list, and this kind of may be something similar to what Dr. Noel was asking. There are some strategies and some models that are quite prevalent, and so, uh, many schools might be using very similar things. I realize that there are a lot of things that are idiosyncratic to an individual district or even maybe an individual site, but there are certainly some models and strategies that are used at, at different sites and in different districts. Every district doesn't have to, uh, establish the fact that it's research-based on their own, do they?
No.
Are, are there some that have, sort of already have a stamp of approval by, by the state or by the federal government?
Yes.
And are those listed somewhere?
They are. Uh, the state of California, uh, has a, uh, list of reading interventions and, uh, strategies that are through the Reading First Grant. And that, we have access to that on the website. We downloaded that and shared it with our staff so that if they were looking to purchase, for example, a, a program that they might want to use, that within the resource specialist classroom, for example, or within the special day class, that we would want to verify that we have, uh, some independent review of this program to ensure that it is, it is an appropriate program, that it does what it says it's going to do with, with fidelity.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
I have a question. It's, as a board member, I'm very excited about the types of professional development that are available and, and the networking that you do at the district level. As a parent, I often am seeking a little more information than what I feel I'm able to get about my own child's disability, and I, I suspect that other parents are sort of in that boat, and we do a lot of our own independent research. Is there a way for the district to maybe enhance the information that goes home to parents about, um, any particular disability? I know there's a lot more research on some disabilities than others, and you can't overgeneralize, but if you have a student that has autism or Down Syndrome or, you know, a known disability where there's been some research on what is successful for that student, um, I've always been looking for a little bit more information, maybe from the district, to parents. Is that-
Parents. I think, uh, there are those individual relationships that are developed at the sites between teachers and parents, between specialists and parents, the speech and language specialist or the adaptive PE specialist or the psychologist, be, between the principals and the parents. Uh, as, as a group, uh, our parents have tended to be sort of set adrift on the sea in terms of, uh, what we've been able to do for them as, as a district. And, uh, in the last year, the, for example, the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, was dormant. That was, that was my choice, that was my decision. I needed to focus that first year that I've been here on issues that were, uh, related to due process and some of the other things that needed to happen in order for me to be effective in my future years here. That, that is being revived. I have flyers on the table for the Special Education Advisory Group, and I would invite- And I would invite the members of the public here to grab one and call my secretary and let her know if you're interested, and pass it along to someone else if, if you know of others who might be interested in participating. We need to reconnect with our parents so that we can have those opportunities to share the information. I see that as a possibility for some forums. I talked with someone this morning who's going to be able to come in and speak to our group in November on some of the resources within the community that our parents can access. And it may be little, there may be little pockets of, of knowledge at different schools or within certain, certain, either elementary or secondary, the different levels, over what's available. But I think, I think Ms. Rodriguez, that's a good point because there does need to be more information provided to parents. And I, I think we, I think we're, we're going to be able to do that this year.
Great. I, I think maybe even SALPA could generate a list of research-based curriculum help for parents or educational support in the different categories of disability. I mean, certainly, there's a lot on dyslexia out there, a lot on, on different things that parents are struggling with. And I know we have information on our website, and SALPA doesn't have a lot on their website, but maybe they could be encouraged to help. I'm not suggesting it be all your staff that do the work. There might be resources out there we can just grab and...
And, and speaking with, with Jim Hemsley, our new SALPA director, we had a conversation about the state of technology with our current SALPA. And I believe there's an interest on his part to create more web access information. We refer to the Ventura County SALPA model as the, the goal because they have such a wonderful website and, and great access for parents, for staff members, for those of us on this side of the, the county line in terms of access and contact. And we'd like to build something like that in, in this, in this area. I won't speak for Mr. Hemsley in terms of what that would look like. But SALPA also has the CAC, the Community Advisory Committee, that meets on a regular basis up in Buellton. That covers representation from all of the, the Santa Barbara County, north and south. And we have representatives who attended last year. We're making another pitch. We're looking for representatives to represent elementary and secondary districts this year. So to our, our audience viewing at home and to our, our public here, please let me know. And we'll, we'll get your name on a list and, and get some coverage there, too.
And hopefully, there could be meetings on the South Coast because my experience is people don't necessarily want to have to drive to Buellton.
That's, that's been a challenge, and, and I think SALPA recognizes that. But I don't know what's going to happen. I, we can certainly make, make that an expression of interest on our part.
Ms. Milikoff?
Can I go back to training for a second? Do we have a lot of turnover in staff?
I think we're relatively stable with our certificated staff. We may have to replace one or two of the designated instructional service providers, speech psychologists. Classroom teachers, we have to hire classroom teachers every year in Resource Specialist and Special Day Class positions. This year, we hired, I hesitate to make a guess. I think we hired nine new, new Special Education classroom teachers.
Would you say we're more so than other districts, or?
The turnover?
It's a usual problem everywhere.
You know, it, it tends to be a significant problem throughout the field in, with instructional assistance in the classified ranks. That's a real problem. It's a problem here, it's, it was a problem in my former district. I, I don't think we're unique in that respect. We do have some other economic impacts in, in terms of what it costs to live here and to support housing and, and other, other expenses that someone on a classified salary scale might find, maybe not able to maintain for a significant period of time, but maybe willing to try it for a couple of years. Or maybe a student at the, at the college who's interested and worked for a few years before moving on. But in terms of certificated turnover, I think, I think we're pretty much where everybody else is. Our big challenge is with classified support.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a, procedures in place where routinely there are program evaluations at the site level? Where, where, where what's being done is being assessed? And I don't mean just by a principal or by you going in and sitting in the classroom, but some, a little more systematic, data-based assessment. And sort of, we did, at the, at the, at the district level, I mean, and thanks to Ruthie Green, one of her many contributions, we got Jim Tucker in here, who assessed and gave us a, a view from an outside pair of eyes. And, and I'm just a great believer in, in the importance of those kinds of second opinions. And a program that did that, doesn't have to, it could be a sampling model occasionally, here and there, to, so you kind of keep track of what's going on, but with a fresh viewpoint, an evaluation by somebody who has no vested interest in anything that's going on in this district. I, I don't think we have that, but is this, is this done at all in, in the, in your field?
Oh, yes. There, there are districts that bring in outside consultants and conduct program reviews. We also have data reviews at the state level that look at student achievement, that look at numbers, and get that information back to us as, as, in a monitoring type of, of manner. But the, bringing in the, the outside consultants, I think 2003 was the last time this district brought in fresh eyes to evaluate.
See, what drew my attention to it was the last bullet point, the word "implementation." We, we so often make policy judgments, and the, and then we look for a difference in the test scores, and we never stop to say, but we don't systematically say, "But how was it implemented?" Because it's, it's pointless to, to expect a result unless, in fact, the program is being implemented in the classroom.
Indeed.
And, and so to me, a, a key part of any evaluation is what's going on implementation-wise, not, not just, not just the next step and what's the payoff, but are they doing this? And is this systematic? And then we get some feedback about, "No, we're not implementing effectively." We've had this in, I know in other areas where we've had a terrible time getting implementation. It's taken us years to get standards implemented. It just takes, it takes a long time to make some of these policy changes. But feedback would be very useful, it would seem to me.
Well, and there are, I think we have the opportunity, and we certainly have the capacity in this district, to build some in-house models where we can put in some checks and balances and, and do that review. Not outside eyes, but I do think that we have the ability to create a system that allows us to evaluate ourselves objectively. We have a wonderful Director of Resource, Research and Assessment and Technology, and he's just been a great asset to us, Dr. Davis Hayden, in look, starting to look at data and to objectively evaluate. The number is the number. And what does, what does that mean? And where are we going to go once we have that information? So I'm optimistic that we can do some of this ourselves. I, I certainly acknowledge the value of outside experts. But at this point, we've had the outside expert. We get, gotten some direction from Dr. Tucker. What we want to do now is put that plan in place and move forward. And as I get to my presentation on the board focus goals, I think you'll see that we've got some very key elements from Dr. Tucker's recommendations that are incorporated into those goals.
I'd, I'd like to add to this discussion, if I may, about bringing in other consultants. My experience has been that there's enough of a turnover in, in Director and Coordinator positions in special education that every time we bring in someone new, we get a fresh look at our programs. And I know that was the charge when Ms. Pulley came into the district. "We want you to give a fresh look to our programs, to make assessments about how we're doing." And, and frankly, I'm, I'm pleased with what she is doing with it.
I, I think that's a very good point. But, but of course, we would like to bring in a consultant next time rather than a new director.
I'd like that, too.
Let's stick with this director.
And, and I don't mean to convey that somebody, that we have to have someone looking over our shoulder all the time. But I, I taught Theory of Knowledge and Research Methodology for almost fifty years. And bias is, is built in to the beast. And, and it's just always amazing when somebody comes in with a fresh point of view, what they can see that maybe you aren't seeing. And it's not, it's not a commentary on some, on people not doing their jobs. It's commentary on, commentary on humans working in organizations.
That may be. My, my perception is that, is that there, the intelligence is already in the room and that we have enough people in the managerial roles here who are responsible for the effectiveness of those programs that, that I think we can expect results from them.
Well, this is a debate you and I have been having for a long time, and I expect it will continue for a long time.
Certainly.
I think we also have a very...
I hope it will. If I get re-elected, it will continue for a long time.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I think we also have a very discerning public and very sophisticated community of parents. And oftentimes, they raise issues that might be raised by outside consultants as well. So we have our community to thank to keep us on our toes as well.
We do, we do.
I'm not sure where you are with this, because I'm waiting for you to get to bullet number two.
I, I'm going to get there.
Okay, good. I, I wasn't sure, we had kind of skipped to number three, and I wasn't sure if you were going to go back to number two. And I'm interested in how we redefine those two areas.
Okay, well, let, let me, let me start. Redefine, this was a, a second recommendation from the Tucker Report, to redefine the role of special education in general and the role of the school psychologists in, in particular. This really dovetails in with response to intervention. In the RTI model, we have the school psychologist who is involved in early identification and early intervention support and direction and facilitation and monitoring with our general education classrooms, with the general education staff. So instead of being reactive or in a reactive role, conducting $5,000 assessments, we have school psychologists who are being proactive by supporting the implementation of an early identification and early intervention program at the beginning of the system where the students rightly need the help the most. We're moving away from the wait-to-fail model, although there's been no regulation from the federal government that this is a mandate. It's still, it's still optional. But most, I think, I hope I'm not speaking out of school, most districts are going toward the response to intervention model because it just makes good sense. Get the students the help they need when they need it, rather than allowing them to wait to fail, which, again, was the discrepancy model that I described earlier. The role of special education in general, you know, we, special education has always been the place that children go. And what we want to communicate to our schools, to our staff, to the parents, to families, to the communities, is special education is support for students who need that support. But special education students are not anybody's kids, they're all of our kids. And I think that is part of the redefinition that Dr. Tucker was referring to. The third bullet point, were there any questions about that second recommendation?
Quick question. Would that make the numbers, would RTI make the numbers go up in the short run? Maybe make the numbers go down in the long run, but would it drive up numbers in the short run?
We just started last, this past spring with RTI at McKinley School. And we've had, I think, a, a very successful and effective implementation there. We're rolling out the program with the assistance and direction of Dr. Amanda Vanderhayden from UCSB to two schools this year. I think once we get enough, enough time under our belts and working with this, we'll be able to see what, what we did in the first couple of years with regard to numbers. I don't know that it would increase or decrease. I'm, I'm interested in finding out. I know that there are, there are studies from other districts, but I'm more, more interested in ours. So I, I'm not quite sure whether we would see the numbers go up initially. I don't believe we would.
I just have, I think I need a little bit more clarification on how this, the difference between the discrepancy model and the RTI model in terms of how students actually get identified.
Yes.
Because in the discrepancy model, the students would have to, it was the wait-to-fail model. Students had to, we had to see over a period of time a discrepancy between their, their ability and their performance.
Yes.
In the RTI model, is it, I mean, when do they get, actually get identified? Is it after they don't respond? Is there, is there still a period of time that we have to see a repeated non-response? I'm just, I just want to know the actual identification process.
Okay. What, what happens with the implementation? And in our district, we're using, we're using the STEEP model. And forgive me, I don't recall the, what, what each of the letters stands for, but it's an early intervention to support academic success. The classroom screenings are conducted, and the test scores are plotted on graphs. And the teacher is working with the psychologist and looking at those graphs to see what students need help. And in those graphs, you'll see across the lower level, a frustration level. Students at that level are, are having difficulties in acquiring that skill. And let's just say it's, let's just say it's math concepts, and it may be multiplication facts, for example. And we do a screening of the entire class and test their multiplication facts. And across the bottom level, we may have one or two students who are at a frustration level with that skill. They haven't mastered that skill. The next level, we may see students who are actively demonstrating that they are acquiring that skill. They may not have a hundred percent, but they're, they're getting there. They're, they're, they're reaching concept mastery. And then at the top level, we'll have the kids who are proficient. They got it all right, they got it all right the first time. In looking at that, that graph, the teachers would know right then and there, these are the three students I need to pull aside and, and offer some additional support, some review, some intervention. And that, that's how it starts. So it's, it's, it's not a matter of, let's wait to see how many spelling tests Bobby fails. It's a class-wide intervention that's delivered to everyone at the same time, and we pick them up right away in that particular math skill or in that English-language arts skill. Does that make it a little bit clearer?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just offer an observation that I think is a very positive thing? I've seen change in our district, at least at the school that my daughter goes to, that also, not only the role of the school psychologist, but the role of the principal.
Yes.
And the importance of that person as the presiding individual in the IEP meeting, being knowledgeable and being able to make sure there's that adequate bridge between general and special education, and that that person plays a very critical role. Hopefully, they've got a background in special education, some do, that can help enhance that. But I would say we've, I've been seeing, at least at one school site, a lot of success with much better involvement, you know, across the board. And I just wanted to point that out, that I think since the Tucker Report came out, I, I'm definitely seeing that. And it's very heartening to see.
Good to hear, too. Any other questions on that, that second point?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. My recollections are also back to the, the time that, when Jim Tucker was here, of a discussion of the role of psychologists. And I, I believe I recall a critique that said that one of the problems is that psychologists are not trained as reading diagnosticians or diagnosticians about reading-related disabilities. And that, I think the numbers were something like eighty percent of, of, of special ed students are, have specific learning disabilities, and a very high percentage of those have reading-related disabilities. So that if one attacks that problem, one is attacking where there's a potential for, for great amelioration. But that, the approach that is built into the, the training and discipline of the psychologists in that is wanting. There needs to be kind of a reorientation of that. Could you update me on, if I, if I related that debate? Could you update me on that, where that's gone?
Since the Tucker Report?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that I can, Dr. Noel. I'm, uh, I'm not sure what, what discussions were held at, uh, at the district level or, or perhaps within the department with the psychologists about their role and their role as it related to, uh, to diagnos, diagnosis of reading disabilities. Our classroom teachers, our special education teachers are involved in academic assessments. And, uh, our school psychologists conduct the psychoeducational evaluation. They do have some overlap with regard to reading, but it really is a team approach on assessments. One of the issues that we look at when we talk about the role of the psychologist with the response to intervention strategies is curriculum-based assessments. So what we're looking at is really based on what the curriculum is and where the student is performing. And we try to move away from some of the standardized tests that, uh, may be appropriate when we're looking at the wait-to-fail model or the discrepancy model, but don't necessarily need to be focused upon in those initial stages of early identification and early intervention.
So are you saying then that the, the, the evolution of thinking here toward this response to intervention model really downplays the initial kind of assessment of, of ability? Because that, that's, you know, very much in debate and problematic in general, whatever ability means and how much of it is native and how, you know, work versus, effort versus, uh, genetic heritage. Uh, are we moving more towards performance measures in gen, in general, both to do the initial assessment and then to do the, uh, to, to, to look at both sides of the discrepancy? Or if we don't look at discrepancy, we're just looking at, at performance?
We're, we're just looking at the, the student's performance in the classroom and ability to, to keep up with his or her peers. And this is not a-
So they don't, they don't do Minnesota multi-person, what do you call it, MMPI? They don't, they don't use these instruments anymore?
Well, let me move away from that for a moment to, to re-relate the psychologist's role in the response to intervention model. Response to intervention is general education and is not special education. It's, it's ours because special education gets to do lots of fun stuff. And, and in looking at IDEA O4, that was a, a recommendation that came down through the federal regulations on how to offer more appropriate interventions and get kids the help they need when they need it. So while we talk about the role of the psychologist in response to intervention, that really is as a facilitator, as a collector of data, uh, someone who supports the teachers in analyzing the data, uh, supports the teachers in directing some of the interventions. But there, there is no special education component in response to intervention at the beginning tiers.
May I add to this as well? At the time that Ruth Green was leaving the board, um, and, and had gone to the state level, we were talking with Paul Tilly, Tully, from, um, the Midwest about the response to intervention model. Now, this is some three years ago now. Is that right? Three years ago? It was a long time ago, it was. But we brought David Marsh in from UC Riverside to meet with all of us, including all the school psychologists, about, uh, how to assess students without doing a, a test of cognitive abilities or intelligence testing that was really based on, on the effect, providing effective instructional techniques. And for those who weren't able to pick it up through those instructional techniques, going through a whole identification model. That was quite a change for our psychologists. I mean, there were some people who came to me afterward, I was assistant superintendent at the time, someone, some who came to me afterward and said, you know, I've been trained to give IQ tests. What am I gonna do? And, uh, and we had some major discussions about that. Because it is a, a whole, uh, retraining in roles. And this, like you said, this stems back to the whole Stephen J. Gould, intelligence testing, the mismeasure of man. You know, here's one test, here's one score, pop. Right in the middle of your forehead, that's your ability.
Hey.
Yeah, well, more like a number, like 100. And, uh, and this, this is a huge change in, in concept and paradigms and in how we operate. Uh, and we, we expected this to take, uh, a while. Um, we, we really didn't expect it to take this long, although the IDEA legislation was, was critical to this because it provided for this alternative, uh, which was not available, uh, clearly through IDEA previously. So the whole area, the, the whole field is moving in this direction. Uh, and that was also a time when we were still going through the parade of directors and it's hard to ramp up, uh, to any sort of a change and, and really pursue that. So, uh, so we expect to continue to pursue that. And, and it's gonna take some time to get there. I mean, it's, the nature of the change model.
So we're really in the process of this kind of, of this paradigmatic change, going from this earlier one to the, to the later one, which, which very interestingly then takes it outside of the, what used to be thought of as the well-bounded area of special education.
Indeed.
I mean, that's where, if we're gonna prevent, it has to happen out there.
Yes.
Yes, yes. This is really tied in, tied in fully to our, our regular ed instructional model. And for those students who aren't keeping pace, given all the things that we do in regular ed, given differentiated instruction in regular ed, given then additional tutoring, uh, afternoon tutoring, after-school tutoring in regular ed, and then moving to the point where, uh, where these students need an even more intensive instruction.
That helps clarify. Thank you both very much.
It is fascinating.
Yes, it is.
Third, the third rec, the third, uh, summary point from-
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt you, Ms. Pulli.
Sure.
I wanna thank you and Dr. Service for articulating that because that was the understanding that I walked away with from James Tucker's report, was that we wanted to shift psychologists from assessment to whole classroom instructional support. When could we expect a progress report on that? I mean-
She's tougher than I am.
No, I mean, this is, this is the linchpin of what is going to change, what's going on in our classrooms. When we had the discussion about Avid, unless we're changing the model of what counselors are doing, it doesn't matter what classroom teachers are doing. Well, I don't wanna, that's putting too strong a point on it.
That's right.
But until the psychologist's role changes, then general ed is not being supported in the way that it should be. And-
The, uh, the, the shift is also part of the board focus goals. And you'll hear Tuesday night, I, I don't know if Ms. Pulli wants to put a date on it tonight, but by Tuesday night, she may be able to give you some clearer sense of that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying to, you know, pick a date on the calendar, but, you know, the end of the school year? Uh, I mean, what would seem?
Well-
I'd be pleased to come back at the end of the school year to give you, uh, a progress report on what we've done with response to intervention at the one school that now has it starting out this year and the two that we'll be bringing on.
And that was my other question. What other two schools are, are coming on? It's McKinley right now is piloting.
Yes.
And then what other two schools are coming?
Franklin is the second.
Okay.
And I don't know that there's been a clear determination on that third school.
Okay.
I think that Ms. Sawasky is working on that.
Which raises the question of, once you start-
Okay. I thought we had designated that school.
Once you start a pilot-
I thought so too, but I'm, I'm not clear if that's-
Okay.
A definite 100%. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just, once you start a pilot, it does impact behaviors at other schools.
Yes.
So, you know, when you're trying to make a comparison, it's, it's not absolutely clean. Um, but in looking at old numbers, um, for special ed populations at schools, both Franklin and McKinley have population numbers that are, you know, in the, in the right ballpark. Some of the schools have much higher special ed numbers. And is it worth it to try and take on one of those schools as a pilot? As opposed to schools that fall into that, you know, 10, 11% range? And I don't know what the percentages are like right now at the schools, because these figures are, are almost a year old. But, I mean, we do have schools that have much higher percentages of, of, you know, special ed identified students as compared to the rest of their school population. And I, I leave that to the experts, whether or not it would be a good idea to have a, a pilot at one of those schools or not.
I think it's, it's a legitimate point and it's certainly worthy of discussion. Would, um, would it be the board's pleasure to have me come back at the end of the school year 2007 with a progress report? Yes?
Yes.
I already have a future agenda written.
Written. Thank you.
Last item, uh, not in the presentation, but, but in, in terms of Dr. Tucker's summary, to pilot extensive professional development to ensure implementation of research-based instructional models. That, that's our challenge this year as we're starting to frame, uh, training for our staff and, uh, developing, um, protocols on what we want our staff to look at when they evaluate, uh, um, a program they wanna buy, for example, to work on a reading skill or, uh, maybe some, some math software that they'd like to look at. So those are, those are questions that are asked before we get approval on the, on the expenses, on the purchases. I'm, uh, aware of our time. I, I don't wanna leave any question unanswered, but I, I wanna try to move through the next couple of slides quickly. We've covered some of this as we've discussed the Tucker Report. Uh, Dr. Tucker's report included some preferred practices on, uh, reading instruction and he referred to the three-tiered reading instruction model. And that's a three-tiered intervention approach where the first tier is, is, is your basal reader series, that's open court in our district, and that would be where students receive their first levels of instruction. And, uh, the second tier for students who are starting to have some, some difficulties with mastering concepts, for example, and this is just in, in addressing reading, um, a, a general remediation program. Some schools use corrective reading. I don't know if it's, if it's used district-wide at the elementary level. I know we have it in our high schools. And that's a program review that I'm going to conduct this year, just in terms of consistency, to see if we're all in the same place. Uh, the third tier is, is a very specific, very targeted and, and intensive remedial program for students. And that, uh, that can differ based on skill levels or what the specific reading strategy may be. For example, when we're talking about, um, uh, uh, reading and teaching reading and students learning how to read, we talk about phonemic awareness and we talk about, uh, uh, phonics skills, we talk about fluency and comprehension, so vocabulary. There may be one of those specific elements that are related to, uh, an instructional program that would be a little more intensive. Instructional support, Dr. Tucker was, um, uh, I think referring to data and the use of data when we talk about how we support, uh, instruction in the classroom. For example, if we're looking at delivering the content standards, uh, we need to make sure that the, the strategies that are being used and the, the content that is being delivered to the students is grade level. And again, um, we may have, uh, one of those nice little solar system units that we like, but if it's not a content standard in the third grade, we don't wanna see solar system units and, and lessons in the third grade. So, uh, looking at the data and aligning our curriculum to, to the state standards, also being very specifically skill-oriented in, um, uh, training our staff at the, at the school level on collaboration, so that we have general education, special education collaboration. Uh, we have a, um, an opportunity to, uh, ensure that we're using curriculum-based assessment, that our teachers are differentiating instruction. Those are all different types of instructional support that Dr. Tucker recommended. Uh, facilitated transition to a new model. I, I think that's where the administrative support is, is crucial. Uh, our instructional leaders at the sites, our principals, uh, need to be, uh, well-informed and, and, uh, well-aware of what we are looking at and what we're talking about when we, uh, talk about, uh, three tiers of intervention and what general education and special education collaboration looks like. And it's not what happens at lunch between the third grade and fourth grade. It's actually sitting down and, and having grade-level meetings and articulating from third grade to fourth grade in terms of, of curriculum and instruction and, and developing horizontal and vertical scaffolding supports for instruction. So we, we, um, we wanna make sure that our, our, our principals are facilitating and supporting the, this new model and that it's done with fidelity. Fidelity, I think, is a key word when we look at implementing any, any new way of doing things because, uh, it's change, it's a big change, change is, is hard and we need to be faithful to the concept. Otherwise, we don't do ourselves, uh, the justice that we need in terms of what has to happen with our kids. And, and we don't, um, we don't honor the commitment that we make to our families and to our children by delivering the best when we talk about making this kind of change. In, in the professional development of, uh, the professional development model that, um, that I mentioned earlier-
Ms. Pulli, I apologize for that.
Certainly. About how we get that information out to our staff, uh, staff members. Uh, I have monthly meetings with each one of these groups. I meet monthly with all of the department chairs, with the visually impaired program teachers, with the deaf and hard-of-hearing program teachers, with speech and language specialists, with psychologists. Um, I take that back, I don't meet monthly with the special education teachers as an all-staff, I meet quarterly with them. Uh, health services, that would be our nurses, I meet monthly with them. Uh, transition program teachers, in the past, they have not had monthly meetings with the director. The transition program, by the way, is our 18 to 22-year-old young adult program. So we've started something new this year where we have monthly meetings with them. And then home hospital teachers, I'm meeting with them and that tends to be quarterly as well. This brings our staff up to date on policy and procedures, uh, teaching techniques, learning strategies, reporting out from conferences. Uh, they may have colleagues who've attended a workshop and they share out what they've learned at those workshops and, and share whatever materials or resources that they may bring back to the group. And, um, we, uh, we try to make sure that if we get someone to a conference, that that person comes back and, and brings the rest of us that information, because it's not always possible to send a team out to training.
Good. Just a comment on that. I've heard in years past, not recently, but, um, a concern among the staff that they just feel overwhelmed with responsibility and with caseloads and, and not often feeling the support that they needed, you know, to sort of get through the day and get through their school years. Do you feel like the programs that you have in place now are, are helping provide some of that support now that the staffing level is a little bit better than it was three, four years ago?
I, I think so, but I, I only have the one year to, uh, to compare where I started last year to where I'm starting this year. And, uh, I'm feeling, uh, a positive, optimistic outlook from, uh, staff members as I get out to schools and, and I've had a chance since school started to, I think I've made about 10, 12 site visits. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy with what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing.
The monthly meetings must be helping too, because there's more frequent information being given out.
Yes, yes. And everyone can stay current. Yes.
Thank you.
Professional development for classified. This, this is a challenge. And, uh, we do keep up with professional development for our health assistants, our nurses assume the responsibility for getting our health assistants the training that they need to stay current in procedures with dealing with students with diabetes, with food allergies, uh, students who are medically fragile, students who may have particular medical procedures that need to be, uh, conducted during the school day, medication, the impact of different types of medications. They are just doing a wonderful job in keeping our health assistants current. Uh, instructional assistance is a challenge. And that comes, I think, from the rapid turnover and the difficulty in investing in staff who, in many ways, maybe we have 70% carryover from year to year or 80% carryover and that, that balance of, of employees who may have started with us, who aren't with us now and we're looking at bringing in a new batch and, and how do we support them in their training? So, uh, the challenge has been turnover with instructional assistants and it's also been time. How do we get them? So this year, we have a plan to bring in groups of instructional assistants during their minimum days at their sites. Uh, the district doesn't have a uniform calendar of minimum days that would be the same from junior high to junior high or, or even elementary to elementary. So, um, we're going to be, have to be in a lot of places throughout the year to try to get that training, but we do have some good, uh, instructional assistant, paraprofessional- but we do have some good instructional assistant, paraprofessional type of training available to our instructional assistants this year, and we're excited about getting that out to them. It looks good. I think it's very helpful. It's really appropriate for where we are right now. And Ellen Goldman, our at-large program specialist, is going to be responsible for implementing that. This is, I think, new for us. I don't know that we've had the opportunity to bring in instructional assistants for training. The opportunities are limited at the beginning of the year because they start when school starts, and they're limited at the end of the year because they end when school ends. So we don't have that time to get them in.
Can I go back to the health assistants? I just have a question. There has been discussed in years past that that's an item that might be subject to cuts by the board, you know, by percentage of hours or something. But in light of what you just said about many of the students providing, being provided service by the health assistant for medical reasons, is there a way, is that like maintenance of effort? I just have, kind of, have always been curious about how that works. If you cut the hours back or eliminate, you know, have a site sharing somebody, and you have a high percentage of special ed students depending on that service, how does that work in terms of the board's decision-making?
I don't know. I would have to look to see where the health assistants are supported in the budget to see if that would be an appropriate application of the maintenance of effort restrictions or if they are, in terms of their funding, coming out of a pool of funds that don't have those restrictions on them. I can find that out for you. You've generated some great questions so far. Thank you all. Interpreters, we have sign language interpreters. They have to stay current. So they, they're, we, as, right now, we have four, and four positions. And they stay current with their training and assume that responsibility for themselves. That's not a district-supported requirement. They have to, they do that to be able to maintain their effective function with their kids. Translators, same type of thing with transcribers. They maintain their own competencies so that they can work in those positions. I don't want to rush, but I do want to get to a couple of things so that we can have time for some other questions. In looking at the state assessments, I just want to show you, just as a reminder, a piece of information that Dr. Hayden shared, Dr. Davis Hayden, shared with you earlier in special education student performance with the STAR testing. Just to point out as an area of concern for me in the special education department, a lot of the issues that we saw with our special education students with performance are at the secondary level. And as you can see, if DIS indicates students with disabilities, that's the subgroup that you'll see identified on this chart. La Colina dropped 26 points in their disabled students subgroup. La Cumbra, 17 points. Santa Barbara Junior High, 25 points. As you can see, we have some concerns with student achievement in special education, and we are going to be working on that this year as well. And that, again, is a goal that's going to be reflected in the board focus goals that I'll be talking about next week. This is just to give you an idea of the student achievement issues that we are dealing with and are concerned about in special education.
I think it'd be helpful for the public to have you comment a bit on the way in which the No Child Left Behind regulations were adjusted to ease the pressure or ease the problem for special education students.
I'm-
AYP.
The AYP, I would have to defer to Dr. Hayden for that because he's far better able to inform the public and far more knowledgeable than I about the issues with the NCLB requirements and the state testing and what supports we have gotten in terms of-
I'd be happy to make a few comments on it.
Okay.
Because it seems to me part of it is, in some sense, part of it's political. The students with disabilities were expected to pass the same performance levels as everybody else.
At the same, yes, same grade level. Yes.
And that meeting a criterion for annual yearly progress. And that expectation would, made that subgroup very problematic for many, many schools. Like, not this time. So that they couldn't, they couldn't, you know, we expected to see more schools pop onto the list of the sanction list. And, God, forgive me. I'm in a meeting. Can't talk to you. Too many balls in here. The, so if I understand it correctly, Dr. Sarvis, I think you explained it to me once, that what, it became very obvious that the threshold was too high, and they simply gave a bonus of 20 points. I've always wondered how they got 20. Why not 19? Why not 21? There's a long story how we got 1,050 Minuteman missiles. It was very similar logic, I think. It's just a number that happened to emerge, but that took the pressure off. And is that now a constant? Is the 20-point bonus guaranteed? Or is it, what's going to happen as that's, as we slide up that scale?
It is for now, and it may slide up as well, but it was a convenient number, an all-too-convenient number. And we think it was a pretty silly thing to do on the part of the state. Answered that one.
I believe there's a couple other things related to that that are in the works. One being about the number of students that might be able to take the alternative to the CAPA test in place of, right now, I believe there's a 1% cap on the numbers of students at a site, and they're contemplating, or maybe already have raised that to 3%. Is that correct?
Well, it had gone to two.
Two percent. Okay.
And there is another test that's being brought in.
Yes, and that's, that was a subject of my-
Which is what you've been looking for all along.
I've been asking for about that, because the same question keeps coming up about can't students take a grade level below or even several grade levels below on the STAR testing where they're at, grade level-wise.
I'm sorry. That new testing will be in place September 2008, and it's above CAPA and below CST in terms of where it fits in the spectrum.
So it's a totally new test, or is it allowing dropping down to lower grade level?
New test, and I have not seen the description, so I couldn't report on that right now.
That's really good news for those of us whose children fall between and CAPA's too easy and-
Davis Hayden is going to find out in the middle of October here. He's off to the meeting.
I guess I wanted to end my question with asking your opinion. Do you think it's realistic to expect the whole subgroup of children with disabilities to perform at the same level by the year 2014 as everybody else?
Personal opinion, professional opinion?
Professional opinion.
Professional opinion. I think we don't lose anything by raising the bar.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Board focus goals. Just a quick touch to give you a preview for Tuesday night and what you'll be seeing and hearing from me. We have board focus goals this year in special education that will be focusing on student achievement, that will be focusing on general education, special education collaboration, instructional delivery models, related services. In this particular case, I'm referring to speech and language services, and what we'd like to do is start to develop an implementation for an RTI model, a response to intervention model in speech and language. And the early identification and reduction of over-identification, which I know is a concern that you all share.
Well, I want to ask about that. It came up earlier. What does it mean to say over-identification? It seems to imply that there is error.
My feeling, my belief is that there is a well-intentioned drive on the part of those of us in special education to get kids the help that they need. And I think sometimes it may be a misdirected application of the services in special education or the eligibility for special education, and that some students who may function to the best of their ability don't necessarily qualify for special education services, but we find ways to get them in because we think it's what's best for them, and it'll help them a little bit. It's giving them the extra help they need.
Well, are you not kind of, is it not always sort of a walking on the edge with you could err in one direction or another? You could admit someone who doesn't need it or reject someone who does. The latter case is the one that leads to so much hassle.
Yes, it is.
That comes to the board. It comes to the public. It goes to the courts.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't know what to say, except that one would hope that we can somehow not make that error while we're trying to reduce this over-identification, that we would not err on the side of keeping people out, of getting services who really are entitled to them and need them.
And that has happened, as we know, that there have been students who have had needs and have not been properly identified and served, and we're working toward making sure that that does not happen. And that's possibly a sense of overcorrection, which is why we may see some of the over-identification. Erring on the side of caution.
Thank you, Ms. Pulley.
You're welcome.
We appreciate this update, and certainly it has been very informative. We do have the public who wish to address this item, so I want to make sure that we give them the chance to do that, and then the board may have additional questions.
Roseanne Crawford, followed by Carolyn Renard.
Hi. My name's Roseanne Crawford, and I'm a candidate for the Santa Barbara School Board. My concern is misidentification in the special needs program and its effect on our budget. When we have English learners that are misidentified, that are put in special education, we lose dollars that could be funded to other areas. We also run the risk, long-term, of these same students not properly advancing through our system. We are not in compliance with the state of California with a systematic way of instructing English learners. We must incorporate a plan that improves the identification process for special education students, not only to serve those students' individual needs, but to be fiscally responsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Carolyn Renard, followed by Joan Espino.
I'd like to point out, first of all, that unfortunately, there's very few members of the public in the audience at this time. I wanted to mention that the response to intervention method, while it's potentially very good at preventing students from ending up in special ed, some students, that we're going to be, that it's not a substitution for the methods that are currently being used. If a student, and it does not mean that if someone is clearly in need of special education services, that the child has to go through years of attempts at getting them to respond to intervention before they finally get the special education services. And, for example, a student with auditory processing problems, visual processing problems, severe attention problems, is not going to benefit from a classroom, a classroom-wide intervention or a group intervention even. They need specialized, highly-trained, one-to-one services. So, you know, there's always a risk that those students, if now it's all response to intervention, will not receive services until it's too late. A student that then doesn't receive those services is not only dealing with an unremediated disability, but then having to deal, in addition to that, with being behind in school, which is extremely difficult, if not impossible, for a student to ever truly come to terms with. I wanted to also mention that one of the DIS services that Ms. Pulley didn't mention is social workers that is provided in the IDEA to help families that are having problems, to help in the home with students that have behavioral problems or other problems. There are no social workers employed by this district to do that. There haven't been, despite my mentioning that at board meetings several times, and it appears that there still aren't. Also, there's no mention of, well, the other thing is, I, Ms. Pulley has done a very good presentation, but there has been a real problem with receiving-
Thirty seconds.
Phone calls back from Ms. Pulley. And, for instance, a service, a quite important service that should have been provided within a week of it being approved, still hasn't been provided, and it's been four months now after multiple phone calls and faxes and complaints to the California Department of Education. So there hasn't really been any mention of the problem, those kind of problems that have been going on with special education in that, in these, in this district. When, I don't feel that Ms. Cordero's question of how a child is identified as needing special education services in the response to intervention model, she only got an answer of how a child is identified as having trouble. And I think that you deserve an answer to that question. It's a very important question, and I'm glad you asked it. You know, since there's only just a few members of the public that have submitted requests to speak, I would ask for a few more minutes. I only have a few more minutes of comments.
Okay. I, we can't extend you to a few more minutes. You can have, you've already been over 30 seconds, so you can take another 30 seconds if you'd like.
I feel there's only two or three members of the public that have asked to speak. You have a whole special board session on this subject. You're only going to give me 30 more seconds. Do you really care about what the public has to say or what the community has to say about this?
Ms. Renard, we have a, we have a time certain on this. We have, we were supposed to end at 4 o'clock. It's now five minutes to four, and unfortunately, you're taking up your time arguing about it. Why don't you try to make the points that you would like to make?
I'd like to add that it might be important if Ms. Pulley provided information on which categories of special education are high this year. I think that would be an important piece of information. And the encroachments is not just simply an encroachment of the service costs onto the general fund. It's encroachments that the district spends on legal funds, fighting parent requests for services, and the district having to pay out lots of funds for private schools when they haven't provided services back in elementary school, and now the student has to go to a whole private school to get put back together in high school in some other state.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
That's not true encroachment. Thank you.
Excuse me. Joan Espino, followed by Kate Smith.
Good afternoon. When I started coming to this district 17 years ago, you had two directors of special education. I will say, I think that Ms. Pulley is doing what she can, but she needs more help. It's true. I have one boy that's out of school now, and she's not been able to get back to me with emails and, you know, for several months, and this boy is walking the streets right now. So I'm saying, she needs more help. Okay? The big question here today is over-identification of special education students. It's a myth. Okay? I have 24 feet of files in my office on just Santa Barbara cases. Majority of those students were not identified. They're getting identified by the Public Defender's Office when I go in the Public Defender's Office, in juvenile court, in the truancy programs, in the expulsion programs. You have students going through student study team meetings and assessments until they're 16 years old and then identified with a learning disability in El Puente or the court system. Believe me, it is a myth that we are over-identifying the students in Santa Barbara. The only reason we are, your numbers are rising is because my agency is here. And in Santa Barbara, we are educating the parents. We have articles in the media. We reach out to parents. Lompoc and Santa Maria, their numbers are lower because there is no advocacy agency up- up there. Your numbers are higher because we are in this community, and other people like Carolyn Renard is out advocating for the students. The assistive technology, Mr. Noel, you asked about the Kurzweil technology. Parents are not informed in Santa Barbara or any of the county schools. Parents who have children with learning disabilities are informed about their right to an assistive technology assessments. Autism or a physical disability, these parents are informed about it. My parents are not informed until I go in with an advocate. And the person that you're using at the County Office of Education to do these assessments, the state has come in and made this district redo her assessments. She is not offering the Kurzweil reader for students with comprehension problems. So the person you're using, now we're coming in and asking for private assessments and finding that the student needs more services.
30 seconds.
The website, it's non-existent. If you go to Ventura Selpa, there's 1,000 connections on that website. Our former Selpa director has not put anything out there. So the schools are not informing the parents, the parents are not knowledgeable. I just spoke to the new Selpa director, and he was surprised that each district, like in Orange County, does not have their own assistive technology assessment. You do have a big problem with the feeder districts. These students are coming into your district either unidentified, and if identified, unremediated. And I have spoken to this board for years. You need to get back into those school districts and tell them to take care of these students because it should not be your responsibility. And that is a big expense on the budget. Encroachment, it's such a derogatory term, and only California, I've worked nationwide, I've worked in Washington, only in California, the feds will tell you to use the term encroachment, is the most discriminatory term. And I please ask, I'm going to write a letter and ask that, that term is always taken out of reports to this board. We are not encroaching on you. These children, they're your children. You get extra money from the feds to help these children, and especially the children with learning disabilities. You're just not identifying them. I'm now in Superior Court with students that you haven't identified, and you're not given the right services.
Thank you, Ms. Spicido.
Okay, thank you.
I feel the truth is that the truancy program is proof that there is no such thing as over-identification or misidentification. I do think that the RTI in general education would create misidentification because the people who are working with the students are not psychologists, psychiatrists, or medical doctors that could say, oh, for crying out loud, this kid has ADD, bipolar, dysgraphia. You will never see that kind of diagnosis coming from a psychologist because, first of all, they're not psychiatrists. They can't prescribe ADD medicine. So the problem is the gatekeeper, which is the psychologist, and I do hope that you will change the model. When it comes to my son, for example, the principal, called the head teacher, of Open Alternative was also my son's teacher. And it was a very sad day when she came to me and said, sit down, we're having an SST for your son. She identified my son as having a problem and made me face that. And when I asked for an assessment when he was in the high school, I asked for two assessments. I had three SSTs, and their only response was to put him in the truancy program. They refused to give him any services. They denied that he had a problem. So please understand, the parents have an intuitive sense of what their children need. I would like to read from the wraparound services of the Patricia Miles Conference that was held in the Santa Barbara County. Wraparound service is "an ongoing planning process used by a team of people who come together around students' strengths and needs to create unique interventions and supports based on a process of unconditional care." I hope that you'll adopt that for your district because our children are worth it, and they need these services. They can do nothing without them. I already gave you the California State Department of Education list of when school staff should consider doing an assessment. That's when suspension or expulsion is being considered for any student, when retention is being considered for any student, when a student shows a pattern of not benefiting from the instruction being provided, when a student returns to school after a serious illness or injury, when a student is evaluated and found not to qualify for special education services under IDEA. Think about Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act.
30 seconds.
Well, there are many others, but your truancy program preys upon the Latinos, it preys upon the students who haven't been identified. It pushes them into the county's program where you lose the ADA from our students who are learning disabled or 504. The county gets twice the ADA if you don't think that the truancy program is a dumping ground to raise the test scores in our district and just fill the coffers of the county. You have to look at that program. There is no advocate for students or families on the SARB. I hope you'll appoint somebody. I have volunteered to be on the CAC. It is a farce. Your Selpa was nationally known to be unethical, illegal, and uncivil. I will serve on the CAC again. The last time I was on it, they refused to accept me because I am an activist. I'm an advocate.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
And we're here to work with you. Thank you so much for listening.
We have one more that just came in.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Lourdes Yuribe. I am extremely thankful for the opportunity to share my feelings, and I don't have no sophisticated terms to use. I don't have a law degree or a special education training like the presenters before me. I actually, five minutes late to pick up my son from reading therapy. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude to Dr. Sarves. Thanks to you. My son is getting some sort of reading therapy, long overdue reading therapy that he's enjoying. This is his second day. And I have so many things and so many ideas to share with you. I believe all of you are parents, and I also understand some of you are parents of kids with learning disabilities. I don't like the term learning disabilities because, as a matter of fact, my kids are very gifted, all five of them, and of course, are very precious. I'm thankful for the services that they get in this district. I don't have no way to compare other districts in this area or any other area. My son was not identified with learning disabilities. Long, long time ago, he bounced from classroom to classroom with ADD and difficulties. He experienced a lot of pain and suffering for the uneducated professionals that were supposed to help him and support him. He suffered, and with him, my whole family. My two younger children were identified after we identified Jorge with learning difficulties. He ran in the families. I don't believe there's over-identification of kids with learning disabilities. I have parents come to me a lot, more than I can handle. I believe there's no trained professionals in this district to identify kids. I would like to express, and I hesitate about expressing this, my autistic son, who's recovering from autism because he was not identified by doctors and professionals, had a very good case of going, you know, represented for the best attorney in California and give you a lot of trouble. And as I was praying and pondering about this direction, you know, someone really wonderful came. And it's been my hope for the last year that she will have your support, you know, to prevent other kids and other families to experience the kind of suffering that we experience. It is because of Joan Pulley that I didn't go to, you know, this special education attorney that will, you know, cost you a lot. It will hurt you, and you know what it hurt the most to this district is money. I prefer to use those monies to go to special education training and support. I've been waiting and hoping, you know, that kids won't experience this kind of suffering. My gate student, my daughter, 13 and a half years old, is suffering depression and pain from experiencing the pain of having three not-identified kids with disabilities. A 16-year-old son in high school who's hoping to graduate and go to college that will not be able to do that. I will have to come back and challenge you to give him a diploma. My older son didn't get a diploma. In the week of the graduation at San Marcos High School, wouldn't want to be in my family. I'm thankful for your help and your support. I appreciate the $40,000 for Linda Moubelle reading therapy, but it takes more than that. It takes educating you professionals. I believe, Dr. Sarves, you went to BYU University. Unless I'm wrong, you went to receive very good training. My kids hope to be, before they were born, you know, they were supposed to be at you in sermations for our church and do great things. And I still believe that my kids, from the sentence, will come the first president of the United States of America. I'm a dreamer, and I'm a believer. I'm hoping to be able to be educator and to help kids. And I will, and all this only happened because of my experiences with this district. I thank you very much for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Yuribe. Okay, that concludes our public comment, so unless board members have additional comments to make, I think that concludes our meeting.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Rodriguez.
And I realize we wanted to be done by four, so perhaps I have three particular areas I was interested in. I'm afraid I thought two hours was not quite ample time to have this discussion. And maybe I can bring these things up on Tuesday night. Is it fair game to bring up any questions or additional comments about today's meeting on Tuesday when you talk about the board focus goals?
I'll defer to Dr. Sarves on that question.
We'd prefer to hear them now or to get them in writing. How would you like to deliver them?
Well, one is a quick question I think you can answer right now, hopefully, regarding training for principals. Are the principals' council meetings inclusive of information about training on IEPs and on some of the things that you're sharing with us today? Are they getting the same information?
Actually, that's one of the points that the elementary principals mentioned yesterday in our meeting with them through the Elementary Principal Council. They'd like some training on IEPs. They listed five points, actually, that they'd like to focus on this year with us. So we are opening up those opportunities for training elementary school principals. You'll hear a little bit more about elementary and secondary Tuesday night when I address the board goals.
And related to that, are counselors getting similar to high school and junior high school coun-- well, I know there's elementary counseling as well, but are the counselors also getting some training even though they don't have necessarily a direct role in the IEP?
They tend to get the training that's made available at the site or through information that's communicated to them from the school psychologist.
Okay. And the two other things I wanted to be able to briefly address, and perhaps we can, maybe you'll cover this in the board focus goals, has to do with the graduation requirements and the transition program? I'm sorry, these were things I had asked to be covered, and I was hoping we'd have more time to talk at the end of this meeting, but if you prefer, we can do it on Tuesday night, if that's agendized properly.
Well, that's what's going to be my question. Would the implementation of the, I mean, I assume implementation of the board focus goals would fall under the agenda item of board, discussion of board focus goals?
It does.
But would these two items be part of that?
We could address both of those within the context of the discussion of the board focus goals.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, then. We will declare the meeting adjourned.